So we're missing Jim Fisher, Josh O'Neill.
And Mankins.
And Eric should be coming back up.
Jim Fisher's having problems getting into the meeting. Yep.
John, do you think we'll be able to break your 10-minute record tonight?
Not now. You just jinxed it.
Hold it.
Are you trying on Jim now? I can't do anything till Jim is here. You got it.
So then we'll have 11 present, one presiding, and zero absent.
Yeah, we should have everybody here if we can get Jim. Everyone, I'm just waiting a little bit to see if Commissioner Fisher can get his computer working. He's running into some technical difficulties. Jason, we're ready. All right, I will bring the Butte Silver Bow Council of Commissioners Committee of the whole meeting to order for Wednesday, May 27, 2020. Can we please have a roll call? Looks like we have...
10.
10 present, one absent, and one presiding. Please let the record reflect Commissioner Fisher's running into some technical difficulties and is working on that at this time. The next item on the agenda is the prayer and the pledge. Commissioner McDonough, would you lead us in that this week, please?
Sure, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Lord, amen.
Almighty God, we implore you, look upon us and guide us this night as we make decisions which so greatly affect our community of Butte Silver Bow. Direct our thoughts, words, and deeds so that we please you and best serve our fellow citizens. Amen.
Amen.
Amen, thank you.
Pledge as well?
Uh, let's, yeah, we can do that.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, the fucking Jesus Christ.
Okay, thank you. The next item on tonight's agenda is any public comment on any items on tonight's agenda. I did receive one letter through the public input, and then after I read this, I'll go to the phone lines. The first, or the only letter is from Eldon Beal, 315 South Dakota Street, Butte, Montana. Chairman Morgan, Council of Commissioners, all my communications on tonight's agenda, number 1, 19-443, my original communication from the start of trying to get the speed limit signs for Emma Park. Number 5, 2020-90 was my follow-up communication when the original was just plain forgotten about, question mark. Number 6, 2020-157 was to have the communication removed from the suspense file and to be acted upon in a timely manner. It was already before the Public Works Committee where a motion was made at the March 4, 2020 meeting, and the recommendation was, and noted by Dan Olson, Committee Chairman, to check to see if it is in the ordinance for speed limits. If it isn't, add it to the ordinance and put up speed limit signs. Also being that Emma Park is in close proximity to Butte High School, there's an ordinance 10.40.030, school zones, which states, D, "There is established a school zone on streets or highways, or portions of streets or highways, or any thoroughfare adjoining the block in which any such school is located. All parks in Butte must, or, all parks in Butte have 15 mile-an-hour speed limit signs, and so should Emma Park. So far, Parks and Rec has only put two small signs banning dogs, which we have all seen in the park almost daily, and no enforcement unless we call. Make Emma Park a park. Thank you, Eldon Beal, 315 South Dakota Street, Butte, Montana." That concludes our comments that we received via written. At this time, I will go to the phone lines and see if anybody is there. Okay, it doesn't look like we have any member of the public on the phone line, so we will continue on with the agenda. On the report of the chair, as everyone knows, I believe June 1, the state of Montana has allowed us to go into Phase 2 of our COVID quarantine. I was looking at resuming council, the council of commissioner meetings in the council chambers, but after having a discussion with the Health Department and others, it was determined that it's probably best that we just stay with remote sessions for right now until we get farther along into the phases. So we will continue having meetings in this such manner for a little while longer. That's all I have for the report of the chair. Section 1, Communications. Just so everybody knows, I'm going to rearrange the order a little bit on this. I'm going to move number 1 and number 5 so they're right close together so we can call Eldon and see if he has any responses on his two communications while he's on the phone. So the first one is Communication 19-443. Eldon Beal, citizen requesting council commissioners authorize the chief executive to amend and include Emma Park, BSB County Code of Ordinances, Chapter 9.16, park restrictions, and to include the penalties and/or fines, etc. At this time, I'm just going to try to give Eldon a call just to get him on the phone. There's Commissioner Fisher. Welcome, Commissioner Fisher. Okay, we're running into some phone issues. If any of the commissioners want, we can just continue on, and then we can call Eldon here in a minute if that's okay. I was going to ask if, for any updates from the commissioners on where we're at on this communication, I know it was in either Parks and Rec or Public Works, so if anybody can give us an update, it looks like Commissioner McDonough has his hand up, so Commissioner McDonough.
Thank you, Chairman Morgan. We referred this communication back in the winter, maybe November, December, I think, the Parks Department, the Park and Rec Board, but they weren't able to meet because they hadn't had a quorum. And then the holiday, I think, changed their December meeting, so I think they took it upon themselves to discuss it, if I'm not mistaken, and Mr. Gallagher came back and reported that the board had determined that they weren't going to... And I could be mistaken, but I think that, if I recall correctly, that the report back that they weren't going to look to enforce prohibiting alcohol and things at the park because of lunch in the park and other opportunities that people would vendor, you know, they might look to do activities at the park, so if anyone else remembers, I could stand to be corrected, but I think that the recommendation's back. I was kind of surprised that it was in the suspense file. I don't remember it going back to that. I thought we acted upon it sometime in late February, so that, I'll start the discussion.
Okay, Commissioner Fredrickson, it looks like you have something to say.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman Morgan. Yeah, the Parks Board recommended not adding this to that, that section of the ordinance for the very reasons that Commissioner McDonough stated, and I actually, I called Director Gallagher to refresh my memory, and unfortunately, he couldn't be here tonight because his daughter is graduating, or else he would explain it again and refresh her memories, but he said he was comfortable with me explaining it. Yeah, it's exactly what Commissioner McDonough said. The Parks Board didn't feel like Emma Park should be added to Mural Park or Heritage Park, which actually aren't there anymore. So if there's no other discussion, I'll make a motion that we note and place this on file.
Okay, I have a motion made and seconded to note, communication and place on file from Commissioner McDonough as a second. Is there anything else on the question? Commissioner Sorich and Shaw, before we go any farther, I'm going to try getting ahold of Eldon one more time on the phone, just if he has anything to add. I'll just try it on here.
Hello?
Hello, Eldon?
Yes.
This is John Morgan in the Council of Commissioners.
Yes.
I don't know if you were able to listen to the meeting, we ran into some difficulties, but I just wanted to see if you had any other comments to mention before the council. Right now, there is a motion on the floor to note the communication and place it on file, but if you had anything to add, feel free to do so.
Yeah, the Parks Board recommended not adding this to that, that section of the ordinance for the very reasons that Commissioner McDonough stated, and I actually, I called...
Eldon, hold on, we'll get some feedback.
Yeah, okay.
Eldon, do you have the meeting being broadcasted in the background?
Yes.
Can you turn that down, please?
Yep, I am.
Okay, now, go ahead, and if you have anything to add, please feel free to.
Um, when they had them, I guess JP Gallagher was there, that had to do with the drinking ordinance, it didn't have to do with the signs. The signs was a total different communication.
Okay, just so you know, Eldon, we're currently on Communication 19-443. Which is...
Yeah, because they already dealt with that. Parks and Rec already made their recommendations saying they weren't going to do anything about the drinking.
Okay.
You know, that's old news.
All right, so is that all you have to add?
Yeah, for that.
Phones here. Okay, so Eldon's still on the phone if there's any follow-up questions. There is a motion on the floor to note this communication and place it on file. Was there any questions from the commissioners? Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to clarify then, item number 5, it looks like it addresses Eldon's concerns about speed limits being close to bus route in the schools and also near parks, so I'm hoping that when we get to number 5, we can talk about that, but it seems like number 1 probably has been, it's old news, like you said, and I believe that we should be able to put this to bed here, I think, and that's just my comment.
Thank you, Commissioner Sorich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I was just going to comment, we have voted on this once before, you know, so I think note and place on file probably the recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Anderson. You're on mute, Commissioner Anderson.
There we go.
Okay.
You hit one button, not the next. I would just like to point out, and I believe I pointed this out before, and we did vote on this before, I believe also, but I don't understand why we can't have a certain clause. I know there's no drinking at a lot of parks, but we have separate things that allow it to be done at certain times, and so I don't know why we can't have no drinking and at this park at certain times allow it at certain times. It seems like it'd be something very easy, and I will reiterate that I believe the Parks Department dropped the ball on their decision of such, and we'll be voting no on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. The only thing that I could think of is if we had an ordinance that said you could not drink at this park in particular, being that Butte Silver Bow doesn't have an open container law, they might not be able to drink in the park, but they could just very easily go onto the sidewalk across the street and drink because there would be nothing against the rules on that unless it was after 2 o'clock. That would be my only thinking off the top of my head of why the Parks Department may have, may have thought of that, so. At this time, there is a motion on the floor to note and place on file. Is there anything else on the question? Okay, seeing none, I would ask that the commissioners vote. Again, the motion on the floor is to note this communication and place it on file. Would everyone please vote? Would anyone like to change their vote? Can we please record the vote? And... Looks like we have 9 yea and 3 nay. Okay. Motion passes. I'm going to just go right down to Communication number 5, Communication 2020-90. Eldon, are you still with us?
Yeah, it's kind of hard to hear everybody talking and everything, but yeah, I'm trying to listen.
Okay. Eldon Beal, citizen requesting council of commissioners for more clarifications on speed limits around Emma Park, which is also a bus route by Butte High School. Also, we are asking that the snow be plowed around the park by Parks and Rec or by the city. Eldon, do you have anything to add on that?
Um, no, because they, Parks and Rec already said that they weren't going to plow the snow and stuff around the park anyway. My main thing is the speed limits and everything and the enforcement. They put up, you know, some small signs there which people don't even see, and they still bring their dogs in or whatever, and there's just, you know, no enforcement of it. But I believe there still should be 15 mile-an-hour signs around that park.
Okay, thank you. I guess at this time, it is Mr. Neary, he's on the meeting, I believe. Is he not? Mark, are you on the... He's not on the meeting. Does any commissioners have any comments or anything to add on this communication? Commissioner O'Neill.
Thank you, Chairman Morgan. A question would be for Eldon, is, have the police been called any of these times when people are driving by fast, or, I mean, any of these instances have the cops been called?
I guess Commissioner Olson, yes, we have called the police, we call the police all the time when we see something going on. It's more of a citizen watch than an actual law enforcement, you know, enforcement is what it is.
Okay, and I just want to let people know that was Commissioner O'Neill, not Commissioner Olson. On the, no, no problems, Eldon, no worries. Commissioner Fredrickson.
Thank you, Chairman Morgan. I have more of a procedural question, so this communication and the one, the other one that Mr. Beal has is related to the speed limit sign, so I guess, are we, are we cross-referencing this one, or, I guess, how does it all work? Are we voting on the speed limit, or potentially voting on the speed limit on this one, or the one that we pulled out of the suspense file, I guess, is what I'm trying to, they both seem related, so.
So they're both related. Keep in mind that the communication that we're dealing with right now is in regards to 2020-90, and if you look at his communication, he as in Mr. Beal, that is what we are voting on right now. That's the topic we're on today. Is there another communication that isn't not on the agenda?
No, I was referring to the one that he pulled out of the suspense file. That one is also, has to do with making it 15 miles an hour around the park.
So that communication's not on the agenda. The only other communication from Mr. Beal is the 2020-157 where he asked that 20, or 19-443 and 2020-90 be pulled out of the suspense file, and they're on this agenda, so if there's another mystery communication out there, I don't know what you're talking about.
No, I think we're on the same page, sorry.
Okay, all right.
Hey, John, Mark's here.
Okay, Mr. Neary, do you have anything to add?
So I just walked in, I didn't hear your question.
So we're currently working on number 5, 2020-90 regarding the speed limit signs around Emma Park, and I don't know if you have anything to add or not. Mr. Beal indicated that it was decided maybe that we wouldn't be putting up speed signs, and I just wanted your input from the Public Works Department side of it.
So, so we looked into it, and it was going to cost around $3,200 to put the signs out. We didn't feel that it warranted for it. I mean, since Mr. Beal has talked to us, I spent some time down there, I don't notice the issues that he's talking about. That's why I just kind of suggested that we get him to put them up.
Okay.
And as far as the Parks and Rec or the city, following the snow, we do follow the snow there. Mr. Beal was saying that it was a green tractor, but Parks and Recs, Parks and Rec actually do run a green tractor with the sweeper, similar to the one that the school district has, but we do remove all the snow around the park.
Okay. Anything else? Commissioner Shaw, and then I'll go to Commissioner Sorich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mark, so just, you know, educate me a little bit, and I know it's stop signs, and we have to go through a part of a routine to get stop signs put up, but for speed limit signs, I know, I live right by Scound Field, that's 15 miles, there's other parks that have 15 mile-an-hour, you know, because we know there are children around, that sort of thing, but what is the, what's the rule, I guess, for parks in general? Is there such a thing, or is it each one individually reviewed, you know, kind of individually?
Commissioner Shaw, we have the rights to put 15 mile-an-hour zones in parks if we want to. So it really doesn't need a test, it doesn't want, but there's stop signs on both silver and porphyry running east and west, and Mr. Beal's, his complaint was a car or two he saw driving down the street 45, 50 miles an hour, where I don't even think we need to try and regulate that kind of speed with a 15 mile-an-hour, a 15 mile-an-hour zone.
Okay, follow-up?
Follow-up, Commissioner Shaw.
Thanks, thank you, Mark. I just didn't have my head wrapped around if there's any, like, ordinance that we can hang our hat on for anything like this, so basically, your department reviews the area, decides whether or not it warrants a speed limit sign, just mainly by, probably by traffic, but the amount of traffic around the park, is that what you're thinking?
Yes, and probably complaints, too.
Okay, okay, thank you.
On the question, Commissioner Sorich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I'm not on the Public Works Committee, but I do recall that meeting, I was, you know, sitting there, and I do recall that the committee had talked, had probably said that enforcement was the better, was a better use of funds, and also, I think at that time also, Public Works was asked to maybe watch your funding level, you know, to watch your budgets, so in defense of, you know, Public Works, I think he made a good decision.
Okay, is there anything else on the question? Commissioner, Chief Executive Palmer.
I just want to add, and Commissioner Shaw had asked if there's an ordinance up. There is an ordinance, we do have an ordinance that lists the parks that require a 15 mile-an-hour zone around them. Most of the parks in town do have a 15 mile-an-hour zone, but this one is not listed in that ordinance, and if you wanted to put up speed limit signs, I would suggest that you ask the county attorney to add Emma Park to that list of parks that require a 15 mile-an-hour zone.
Thank you, Chief Executive Palmer. Is there anything else on the question, or what's the pleasure of the council?
Commissioner, Chairman Morgan?
Commissioner Fredrickson?
Uh, yeah, this, I mean, I kind of, I agree it's a park, and so it should probably I agree it's a park, and so it should probably be listed as a park. And, uh, you know, I understand the way Director Neary feels, and I, I respect his, his judgment on almost everything. But it is a park, and so we should probably list it as a park. Uh, so at this point, I'll make a motion that we add Emma Park to the list of parks in chapter ten, point four zero, point zero four zero, in the Parks section in the municipal code, which will establish it as fifteen miles an hour border.
Second.
Second. Second.
Trying to think logistically, there is a motion made and seconded to, uh, add Emma Park to the municipal code and, and recognize Emma Park as a park. I would ask that you just add that you, uh, refer this communication to the, to the county attorney's office so that they can come back with a, a draft ordinance if, if that's what, or change if that would be okay, Commissioner Fredrickson?
Yeah, um, yeah, I'll, I'll amend it per your recommendation that it goes to the county attorney's office for review with, uh, and come back to us with a, an ordinance change.
Okay. Is there anything else on the question? Does everybody understand the motion? The motion is to add Emma Park to the, to the municipal code and ask the county attorney to draft that change. On the question, Commissioner Fisher, who looks like he's in witness protection with his, uh, the sun, the sun glaring in from the back. Commissioner Fisher.
I thought it was the twilight zone myself.
It's an aura.
Thank you, Chairman Morgan. Um, I believe the county attorney, uh, has weighed in on this at one time in one of our public works meetings. And I believe that one time, uh, we were trying to get the ordinances similar to the stop sign ordinance that we, we put in effect here some time ago, so that this didn't have to come before the council on every occasion. And I believe if the county attorney's available, she may be able to weigh in on this.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. She's not available at this point. She had another engagement tonight. But, um, we can definitely take a look at that as this gets referred to her if that's the, the, the pleasure of the council. So, anything else?
Has the, the motion been amended and seconded?
I believe, who made the second? Was that Commissioner Shaw?
I, I would, uh, second that amended motion.
Okay, on the question, Commissioner McDonough. Uh, did you have anything, he looks like he did.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the discussion that we had in the Public Works Department was, the recommendation was that we didn't have thirty-two hundred dollars extra to go put up eight speed limit signs. So at that time, because of the COVID nineteen, we put the communication in the suspense file, and now we have it out. So I think that, I mean, we can make the, follow along with the recommendation to make it a park and change it by the ordinance. But does that still resolve the issue of the funding for speed limit signs? I mean, the Public Works Department determined that it was a, an enforcement issue and that it wasn't, um, you know, the traffic really didn't warrant, uh, eight signs for the expenditure because we didn't have those funds available at the time we discussed it, so.
Uh, Mr. Neary or, or Ms. Gleason, do you have any comments on that?
Chairman Morgan, um, Commissioner McDonough. We did discuss having limitations on budgets, um, as a result of COVID, just to reduce some excess of spending. But right now, at this time, if you find this necessary, and they could be installed before June thirtieth, um, we could work on getting some of them done this year and then some next year, um, in next fiscal year's budget. Or we could look at, um, kinda allocating it out during the next fiscal year.
Uh, Mr. Ne-
I'm still not concerned with budgets and how we're gonna move forward in the future. But we have to make some priorities, um, in our budgets, and if this is one of them for you, we can definitely try to work with it.
Mr. Neary, is it possible to get these signs installed by June thirtieth?
Chairman Morgan, I guess if that's what we wanna do, I guess we'll give it done.
Thank you. Um, is there anything else on the question? Commissioner Sorich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I do recall that meeting also, again, not on the Public Works Committee, but I know we, there's some discussion about, you know, they're saying it's around parks. And nobody follows those signs either. So I believe enforcement is a key. Yeah, so is, is the thirty-two hundred dollars at this time really necessary? A necessary expenditure? I'm, I'm looking for discussions.
Okay, anything else on the question? Uh, Commissioner Olson.
I tend to agree, to agree with, uh, Commissioner Sorich on that also. I, I think in the big picture, uh, there are better ways to s- uh, spend, um, limited funds. But I, I, I still support that we should at least put it into the ordinance that it is fifteen miles an hour, uh, even if we don't sign it.
Is that in the form of a motion, Commissioner Olson?
That was more of a comment. I, I'm not sure what the motion is right now anyway because we've had a couple of motions above and beyond our initial motion, so. I don't know if we should restate it, um, with all the motions that have been made or not.
The motion right now is to, uh, add the Emma Park to the municipal code and refer this communication to the county attorney's office to draft that change and come back to this body. Is that-
Chairman Morgan, may I?
Uh, Chief Executive Palmer.
I just want to reiterate that it is a designated park. And for the safety of the kids using that park, I think we should go along with every other park in town that has a fifteen mile an hour zone. And we will work on getting the signs up if we have to start this year and finish next year. I think it should be a priority. Otherwise, we should look at delisting it as a park and look at all the parks around town to make them equal.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything else on the question? Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, uh, you kind of took the words right out of my mouth. I just wanted to re, uh, kind of reconfirm to everybody that we are trying to open that back up for Lushland Park and maybe other things. It's an, it's an awesome destination, it could be. And I think if we put the fifteen mile an hour, uh, speed limit signs in there, that would be, you know, just an encouragement going both ways for, and, you know, for the people that wanna speed along there. If we do have crowds, I've been to Lushland Park and it's pretty crowded. So I would appreciate that as being part of our decision-making. Thanks.
Okay, anything else on the question? Does everybody understand the motion that they're voting on? Okay, would everyone please vote? Eldon, just so you know, the motion on the floor is to refer communication twenty twenty dash nine zero to the county attorney's office to add Emma Park to the municipal code.
Yes, I've been trying to listen and decipher it.
Okay, uh, has everybody voted? Would anyone like to change their vote? Would the clerk please record the vote? Looks like we have eleven yea and one nay. So motion passes. Keep in mind that this is a committee of the whole meeting, so this isn't finalized until we go through a regular committee meeting or regular meeting next week, just so everybody's aware of that. So if there is questions for the county attorney, you can ask him at that point moving forward. Okay, Eldon, just so you know, the motion did pass. Okay? Um-
Yeah. I, I have a, a question on what we've just done. Um, is there any action we need to take to have those signs installed? Or is that, will that be another topic of discussion at another time?
Commissioner Olson, they, we need to have the county attorney added to the municipal code first, and then we can look at it that way. So we'll, we'll have follow-up questions for her moving forward. Okay, motion passes. I'm gonna go back to, actually, since Eldon's still on the phone, just for, to, to stay consistent, I'm gonna move to number six, communication twenty twenty dash one five seven. Eldon Beal, three fifteen South Dakota Street, requesting council of commissioners poll communication nineteen dash four four three and communication twenty twenty dash nine zero out of the suspense file to be placed on the next Public Works Committee agenda. Um, so we, we did that, so I would just ask that we cross-reference twenty twenty dash one five seven with communication nineteen four four three and twenty twenty dash nine zero and place this communication on file. Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would move to cross-reference communication twenty twenty dash one five seven with, uh, communication nineteen dash four four three and communication twenty twenty dash nine zero. Uh, actually, nine zero is, we're gonna be holding it during, for the county attorney. Can we still place that one on, on file as well, or?
No, Commissioner Shaw, we're doing is, uh,
Okay.
We're, we're, that one will stay on. This is, we're just getting rid of twenty twenty dash one five seven.
Okay, I will amend that to repeat. I would make a motion to cross-reference communication twenty twenty dash one five seven with twenty, uh, communication nineteen dash four four three and place it on file.
And, and, and twenty twenty dash nine zero and place on-
Place it on file, okay, there we go.
Okay, there, there was a motion made and seconded by who? Uh, Commissioner, Commissioner McDonough? Thank you. Motion on the floor, is there anything on the question? Would everyone please vote? Okay, would anyone like to change their vote? Can we please record the vote? Looks like we are missing Commissioner Olson. Commissioner Olson, how did you vote? Can you please, he voted yea based on his thumb up. So it looks like it's twelve yea, zero nay, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Beal.
Thank you.
I will move to number two, communication nineteen dash five seven eight. Gary Rundle, citizen requesting council of commissioners consideration to purchase property located at eighteen twenty Banks Avenue, Butte, Montana. I wish to redeem the property from Butte Silver Bow before the tax sale in February. We'll continue to hold this in abeyance as we have, uh, have to have a public hearing on this. And due to COVID, we can't at this time. So we'll continue to hold this in abeyance. Number three, communication nineteen five eighty-two, Ed Banderov, Greeley Neighborhood Community Development Corporation, requesting council of commissioners to invite a Montana DPHHS toxicologist to give a presentation relative to the hazard risks to human health of safety metal contaminants present in Butte Silver Bow community. We'll continue to hold this in abeyance as well. Number four, communication twenty twenty dash zero four. Mike Townsend, citizen requesting council of commissioners to consider the repurchase of my home located at one oh five West Porfry. I will comply with all the rules and regulations of the county enrichment program. We'll continue to hold that in abeyance. Number seven, communication twenty twenty dash two zero six. Mark Neary, Public Works Director, requesting council of commissioners for time on the Council of Commissioners, June third, twenty twenty, Council of Commissioners regular meeting to open bids for materials for the Dewey Phase Three water line replacement. We'll continue to hold that in, in abeyance pending the June third date. Number eight, communication twenty twenty dash two zero seven. Mark Neary, Public Works Director, requesting council of commissioners for time on the Council of Commissioners, June third, twenty twenty, meeting to open bids for the materials for the Big Hole Transmission Line. We'll continue to hold that in abeyance pending June third. Number nine, communication number twenty twenty dash two two one. Danette Gleason, Finance and Budget Director, requesting council of commissioners for time on the June third, Council of Commissioners agenda to give a presentation on an alternative method for assessing fees for the Countywide Road Maintenance District. We'll continue to hold that in abeyance pending the June third date. Um, now, at this time, I would ask for any public comment on any public matter not on tonight's agenda. I don't have any communications to read, so we'll just give it a minute while we wait for the phone system. John, do we have any calls right now? There's no calls right now, but we will give it a-
Chairman Morgan?
One second, Mr. Chief Executive. Okay, there's no calls on, on the phone line tonight. Uh, Mr. Chief Executive.
Yeah, I'd just like to report on the McGree trucking and the green waste containers that we had talked about earlier in the year and late last year. McGree did get back to me today, and, uh, they said that it would cost approximately twenty dollars per month, and they could pick up each container, uh, each week of the month. But it'd be at least four times a month they would get empty for twenty dollars a month. But they have to get commitment from one hundred and fifty customers at least. So we're gonna put a little poll on Facebook and on our webpage to see if, uh, how many people are actually interested in paying twenty dollars a month for the green waste containers. So I just wanted to update the council on where we're at with that. And then I had some, uh, questions asked about the alley rally. Uh, because of the COVID nineteen, we held off on having that this year because of the, uh, you know, usually we hire a bunch of summer help to unload trucks and everything. And we thought with the COVID nineteen and everything, we wouldn't be able to do that. So we just decided to hold off on the alley rally. We will continue to, uh, evaluate whether or not we should move forward with that. And we're just allow people to landfill and rock. So we'll give you a further update at a later time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Uh, next on the agenda is a motion to adjourn. Do I have it?
I move to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been, uh, seconded by Commissioner McDonough and Commissioner Anderson. All those are, I guess, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everybody, and have a good night.